Six oh one P M on Monday, July twenty second, twenty twenty four. I'm calling to order the town of Rutland Select Board meeting. We're meeting in the Rutland Public Library in the lower level. We are available on Zoom, I think, for remote access, um, as well as being livestreamed on local access cable and recorded for re-airing on local access cable, as well as YouTube and other media outlets.
Are we connected to audio?
Um.
Is there anybody watching?
Peter or is?
Check with Jake.
Peter or Jake, are we, is Zoom all set? We can start with the pledge after a brief delay with technology, not so brief. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Until you become a level of protestant, one nation under our individual rights. We have, um, we're a four-member board tonight, Paul, uh, Tom Galvin is not here. I don't think he's on Zoom. I don't think he's is able to join on Zoom, um, it's prior commitment. So, um, it's the four of us tonight. We have minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. Um, we have meeting minutes from our public meeting, um, our July eighth meeting. Everyone was present, um, if there's questions, comments, concerns, edits. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Treasury warrant twenty-four dash twenty-eight and payroll twenty-four dash P W twenty-eight and twenty-five dash two and twenty-five dash P W two.
Motion for Treasury warrant and payroll, is there a second?
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any comments, questions? I think, Austin, this should be the final round for the twenty-four fiscal year and then we're off, only in twenty-five.
Question, after this warrant is signed, will the accountant issue the closeout of what we totally did? You know how every month we get a listing on it?
Not right away. Uh, you'll get a final year-to-date budget report, but, uh, we still have some books to close. So if you're asking about free cash, um, it'll be probably another month or two until we have a solid answer what that looks like.
But we will close the accounts.
Yep, yep.
So we have a motion and a second. We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Waitman I. And then we have the approval of meeting minutes from the July eighth, uh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. Everyone was present.
Motion to approve meeting minutes for July eighth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
With motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns, edits?
Yes, I have concerns on the board and committee appointments. There was a lot of information thrown around there and I'm trying to figure out where the facts came from, where what was mentioned was prohibited by law or allowed by law. Cause if it isn't, I would like some of those comments stricken.
I may, yeah.
Uh-huh.
It's, it's, these are documenting the discussion that occurred.
But it has to be an accurate discussion.
Yes.
Do you, without something specific, can you reference something that you're curious about?
Yeah, uh, for example, it was noted that the candidates also had not been discussed with other members of the C I P C. Where is that, where is that required to be done? Cause it's like an accusation.
It's in the board and committee appointment policy that I sent out.
No, it's not. It does not say that it has to be discussed with other members of the committee.
The policy asks for the committee as a board, um.
Written recommendation.
It says committee.
It says written recommendation from the relevant board or committee.
Recommendation. And as chair of the committee, which I was appointed by the committee as the spokesman for the committee. So I'm trying to figure out where that line is. So if it says no, then the chair can't, can't do any of that without the board's, the committee's permission. I'm just trying to get clarity here, okay? For all committees going forward.
Well, Harry, just to, I mean, so, uh, written, so this is a select board policy that was approved in two thousand seventeen and then amended in twenty eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, procedures to fill vacancies. The general policy says a written recommendation from the relevant board or committee. Written recommendation is an official action. So, um, as you know, uh, no one member can act alone on behalf of a committee. It requires a majority voter approval from that board. So recommendation on behalf of a committee without its approval would not be in compliance with this policy.
Okay, so that applies to every committee, obviously. Okay?
Yep.
And every board. Okay? The other issue I had was, is that Jen said in a statement, Jen reiterated that is the responsibility of the entire board to appoint members, not for one member to make that decision on behalf of his entire committee, which is correct. But I did not make, I put forth a recommendation. I didn't make a recommendation. I said, here's somebody that you should be looking at to appoint. So I'm trying to figure out again where you feel that the chair of that committee took it upon himself to make just that decision. So there's a lot of, in my mind, there's a lot of ambiguity here in terms of what's being said.
How would you?
Also, let me finish, also, there was a comment made that it was not my responsibility of chair, as a chairman, to go seek members or any chairman to go seek members for a committee. Leave that specifically up to the town. If you find somebody that's good, you don't go after them. Leave that up to the town.
I think the conversation for that, if I may, was specifically that anyone can go out and seek members for any committee, whether your chair or a committee member or you're working just as a, as a, on behalf of town. But they still need to go through the select board office so that the select board office has all of the relevant information for anyone who may be interested.
I agree, but that was not the comment that was made. And of course, we could have that replay back if you want.
That definitely was clearly stated that everything needed to go through.
Yeah. Unless there's a majority of consensus to approve these minutes, I would just recommend holding if it seems a member is in disagreement with the content of these minutes. We can have a lengthy discussion about minutes, but obviously we've had a lengthy discussion trying to access our virtual meeting, so. Um, but we'd be happy to review this again. Just a comment about recruitment. I think recruitment and, um, recommendation is very different. Um, I myself have received calls of interest of folks interested in boards and commissions and my first response is submit an application, um, which I think has been standard practice for all boards and commissions and staff members. I think that's very different than, um, recruiting and receiving the letter of interest and then making a recommendation without consideration by the board or your respective board or commission.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, but that was not the gist of that comment. It was like, it's not your responsibility to go out and get people for the board. No, it's my responsibility as a chair to find the best people, have them go through the town. But that doesn't preclude me from looking for individuals that I think are capable for this committee or any committee. Is that agreed? Do we agree on that?
Well, I think the general responsibility of a chair is to, is to run the meeting, prepare the agenda and make sure the minutes are posted timely and make sure that the meeting business is continued. Um, I think recruitment is one of those that, you know, there's some boards and, or there's some communities that have a whole volunteer recruiting committee that does all the recruitment on behalf of the boards and commissions. So obviously Rutland does things a little bit differently with a lot of things. Um, but that's not to say that you can't try to identify good candidates for a board or commission.
You know, this, this was quite lengthy and of course I did take offense to some of it. But I think going forward, all committees or boards need clarification to the chair exactly what their responsibility is for recruitment. So we don't kind of go out of the way. And I think the board needs to look at that as part of the policy going forward. Cause I'm just one of many chairs out there that's on the C I P C. And I think we need clarification on that.
So if I understand, we can hold the minutes, we can?
We have a motion and a second right now, so you don't have to go over send your motions.
Right, I was gonna s- I was gonna say.
So I can, I can withdraw?
If the board is amenable to withdrawing and then go back and?
May I ask what the direction is by holding them? Am I, I'm not clear as if I'm changing them? Are we bringing back the same set of minutes to the next meeting?
Can, can we just revisit the conversation just to confirm?
Okay.
Nothing new needs to be, I'll do the same. I'll plan to go through and read and see if there's anything to add.
Yeah, I'll.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I think Paul, you had the second for that. Were you, are you okay to rescind the second and we'll hold those?
I am.
For future meaning in general cases, maybe. Um, I will open the public hearing. It was posted for six o'clock, uh, now six twenty-four. This is a public hearing, um, for, uh,
A public hearing, huh?
Uh, application wherein, uh, the board has been in receipt of an application to amend a current license for storing flammable. Um, they're looking to add four one hundred twenty gallon propane tanks at the Safeway location, the blue building across the street to accommodate, um, Coffee Land, the new coffee shop, as well as allow for future growth. Um, I believe, uh, the application has been submitted and reviewed through all the appropriate channels. Um, Fire Chief Neip has approved it as well. Um, I believe we have, the propane company is here and Chief Neip is here both. So, um, this is a public hearing, so public is welcome to, um, ask questions or voice any concerns as well. Does the board have any conversation?
Somebody here from?
The propane company, please, if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Sure, my name's Tim McGinn. I'm the manager at the service center in Sterling.
Just one question, um, if I might through the chair. Is, is three thousand gallons of L P enough so that you're not coming there every week or every two weeks? Or you can, they only applied for, maybe Seth can answer that too? I'm curious as to the volume that they're using for the tanks that are there and maybe the traffic, I don't know, cause we still got a problem right there at that place.
What, shall I? Yeah, please. So the amount of storage with the three thousand gallon tanks is sufficient for what is there. However, um, the new Coffee Lands restaurant, in order to get the propane there from those three one thousands would require tearing up a lot of stuff. And so it's much more simple, cost-effective and frankly, safe to just have some small, a smaller tank on the side of the building there. So, but in answer to your question, we don't, we're not there every week filling up those three one thousand gallon tanks. It's, it's, we typically try to have a six-week period during winter where we're, that's how we measure storage, roughly six weeks, more or less.
The reason is, I have propane in my house and I think I get it serviced once a year. So I didn't know if that was gonna be a lot of.
For, for what do you use that propane, cooking?
Much, yeah.
Yep, yep, so.
So that's kind of why I.
You made our one, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was kind of my discussion on that.
Yeah, it's diff, far different for heat.
Yeah.
Um, but again, if you're just using it for cooking, it would be very infrequent. You probably don't use the whole tank each year. Um, but those tanks are expected to turn over frequently. So we try, we aim for six weeks.
All right, thank you.
Well.
And for, if I may for clarification, the, the above-ground tanks will be filled outside of the three thou, the underground tanks or the above-ground tanks are fed from the undergrounds.
It's separate system entirely.
Separate system entirely. That's what I thought and then the way that conversation went, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Separate.
Is there anyone here from the public that has any questions, comments, concerns, anything on the, um, flammable tank storage? And Seth, you?
No issues.
No issues, everything is good.
Yep.
Thank you.
And actually, can I ask, who's, who's the actual owner of the tanks?
Uh, the tanks, that would be Superior Post Propane. We own the tanks.
Okay.
And that are in the ground and that will be set on the, uh, side of the building.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board or the public? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing then.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Wait, and a second, we'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Waitman I, six twenty-nine. Um, so we have all the information, the application, everything is in front of us. Um, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the application for a license to store flammable for Rutland Safeway Incorporated, two forty-nine Main Street.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, questions, comments, concerns, conversation. We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Waitman I. Good to go. Um, we'll do the signing, I think, after the meeting, so, um, there's nothing to sign. There's something to sign.
Okay.
You're good to go.
Yeah, terrific, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks for coming out, sorry for the delay. Um, we, I will now look at public comments. Name an address, please, sir.
Lou Carnacure, eighteen Blueberry Lane, Rutland. Um, couple of questions. How many full-time employees do we have here in Rutland? Full-time? Less than a hundred, more than a hundred?
Less than a hundred.
Less than a hundred, okay. And our population is still under ten thousand? Close though, right?
Close.
Okay, but we're still under ten thousand with less than two hundred. Um, our part-time employees, are they, do they benefit with any, uh, like insurance or any of that stuff?
Uh, it depends on their hours, anyone over.
But some of them may and some of them might, so, all right.
Yep.
Okay, um, besides the human resource position and the planning position, are there any new or full-time positions that are in the, what I would call the administration?
No.
None, so just those two positions?
Uh, with the exception to, um, public safety, as you know, with this fiscal year twenty-four budget, there was a deputy fire chief position and a police lieutenant position that was added.
Yeah, but those are, yeah, okay, I understand those positions ongoing inside there, okay. Didn't we always, I, we always had somebody that was under the chief? I don't know if they had an official, seemed like there was always somebody under the chief, but thank you. Um, okay, um, the human resource manager, he or she, primarily what is there? What, what, what do, are they involved like in? I know we have two or three unions in town. Um, I was here when we got the police. In fact, I, I talked to my colleagues and we gave them joint recognition so they didn't have to go through an election. That was just a waste of time. So I'm, I'm familiar with unions. And besides those couple of unions, what, what else is there? What primarily would the human resource person be doing?
Um, it's a, I think a changing job description as the role is kind of adapting through the first year of employment. Um, dealing day-to-day with policy, assisted the board, myself and rest of the department heads with preparation of, um, Rutland's very first employee handbook and personnel policy handbook. Um, assisting day-to-day matters with department heads for their personnel issues, assisting with our six collective bargaining unit agreements, negotiations. We had four in the last year, uh, one upcoming, uh, next year, another public safety union, uh, assisting with, uh, salary schedules, uh, research, um, comparison measures.
Okay, thank you. Basically what?
Yeah.
I used to deal with human resource managers all the time. That's why I have a somewhat of an idea.
I just want to add one more thing, the most important thing, uh, getting people paid every two weeks. Uh, we're shifting some folks, um, in our treasurer collector's office. A, um, new responsibility for the human resource coordinator is assisting the administration of payroll and benefits.
Yeah, I'm sure people want to get paid when times, when, 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 when the check should be there, so good, good for that. And the planner, uh, works in conjunction with the planning board?
And the economic development commission.
Economic development. So my understanding is that this person primarily is looking for ways to get businesses into this town. Am I correct in that assumption or have I heard this correctly?
Uh, that's correct, but also acting, um, as a liaison between boards and commissions and staff and the community, um, for technical review of potential projects. So not only assisting business development, but also residents with their, uh, planning or zoning questions.
When, when, uh, going back to when the hospital, the state was giving us the hospital, the buildings were still, uh, there. And the state had put a ton of money into those buildings. They were in primo shape, if any of you remember. You know, they were in really good shape. So a committee was formed. Uh, I was vice chairman of the committee. Uh, Jerry Power, uh, was the chairman of the committee. And our job was to investigate to see what we could do with that property in terms of bringing business to it. So we brought in a couple of headhunters. And, uh, this one gentleman came in and he sat down and he started talking with us and he said, I inspected the buildings. He says, these buildings are in fantastic shape. Uh, they would be prime places for people who start up a business in their cellar or in their garage. And now that has gotten too small, yet they're not ready to go into a factory. So these would be primo things. So we were all excited. I remember Jerry, you know, we kind of jumped out of our seats. We were so excited and so were the other committee members. And then he took the, the pin and blew up the balloon. And he said to us, you have no infrastructure. It is difficult, absolutely difficult for anybody to get to where there's major roads from your town and you'll have nobody out here. And consequently, that's been the problem. We have net to have anybody come in here with a big business to come here. In fact, my understanding was the reason sin cabs closed their door was because truckers were not coming here just for one or two cabs. And so it was becoming more difficult for them to get their product out unless they sent out seven or eight or ten cabs at a time. So they moved out of town. So I'm just concerned about why we need a full-time. And I'm not against anybody having a job, believe me, I'm a union guy. I, I fought for people's work, I fought for jobs. But I just have some difficulty wondering what we need a full-time planner for uh, when we are not going to get. One of the small little businesses we had here, when the gentleman took over for his father-in-law, he eventually moved the business to Gardner cause he was closer to roads. And for years, this business had been up on sixty-eight. But it's, and, and any of us who live in this town and try to drive into Worcester through Holden, huh, are you kidding? No one's gonna want to come out here. So anyway, I just have my concerns about that. But I'll get back to that in a second. My next question is, and I promise not to take up too much time. Um, how did we do in the last two years? Cause it was two years ago at a town meeting that I got up and tried to promote a either full-time or sixty or seventy, eighty percent time grant, uh, someone to go after grants. And I observe around Rutland, I love this town. I've been here since nineteen seventy-three. Mary and I just celebrated our fifty-first year here and we're not about to leave. Uh, there were some people that liked to get me out. They want to keep Mary here, but they'd like to see me go. But she, as at this point, still cares about me, so I don't think I'm going anywhere. So we're gonna be here until we either go to a nursing home or down a miles. So, uh, I ca, I care about this, I really do care about this town. And I, so I observe stuff. I look at our D P W garage and guys are doing a great job down there. I think they're fantastic. And the nine years I was a selectman, they were great people back then and we built them that nice, nice barn down there. Thanks to Cleve Blair, by the way, who never gets the credit for, he was instrumental in getting us to put that type of barn up. But anyway, they have Holden their trucks together by chewing gum. Chewing gum. And I look at Holden with pristine equipment and, and we're holding it together with chewing gum. Now, I realize the problems, I created some of the problems where we built so many buildings and now we're still paying for them, you know? Bad, bad on, at the time, we had money, so we decided we needed to have a new library. We needed a new P D W, we needed to do Glenwood, we needed those things. The fire, the police station, we had to do that. We, we needed all, so we did those things, okay? So I know we're still paying and so that's costing us, costing us money. That's why I don't understand, I really do not understand why we don't have somebody in if not a full-time position, a seventy or eighty percent, because I know for a fact that between the federal government, the state government and private, there are grants galore out there. And for us to say, well, the department head can apply for grants, that's not what we hired the department head to do. We hired the department head to run the D P W. We hired this gentleman to run the fire department, ambulance department. They're busy enough. There was an accident over on, uh, over on Campbell and, um, uh, over here on sixty-eight the other day, not Campbell, but sixty-eight and three ambulances, I understand, went down there. So this guy's busy enough doing that. The police are busy enough with all the stuff that's going on. We shouldn't be asking our department heads to spend time or an unknown amount of time writing grants. We should have somebody designated that. That person can live in Jim McGovern's office. Jim McGovern's office is ten miles from Rutland, eleven, maybe eleven miles. A, a, someone who was involved in that stuff could be down there living. You get a knock on the door. I know when I was a selectman, McGovern got us a tanker, uh, for the fire department. In fact, we had passed a, a, a override and we didn't have to spend because we got a tanker through the federal government. I don't know if we've gotten anything since then of, of that magnitude. I don't know why we don't have somebody. Between the planner position or the human resource, because with all due respect, I don't see these as full-time positions. We have a very good planning board. I don't know what the planner would be doing all day long. I don't know if there's a, less than a hundred full-time employees. We're not bargaining all the time. And by the way, when we bargain, do we bring that expensive law firm from Boston to, to, to the table with us? Thank God, cause I used to deal with them on the other side. They're very expensive. You, every time you sneeze, they send you a bill. Well, we had the nice kid up the street here, that, well, that's another story for another time. So my, my point is, I'll bet you we haven't gotten that many grants and there's grant money out there. I've talked with, uh, representative, um, uh, from, I can't think of her name right now. Forgive me, I'm old.
Ferguson.
Ferguson, yes. I've talked to her numerous times when Ann Goby was, was, uh, our senator. I've been down to McGovern's office and McGovern himself told me, cause I, I worked on his first campaign. McGovern told me, there's money out there, Lou, the federal government has that money, you know? But are we really chasing that money? I think we are doing a real disservice to this community by not having that. And so I would urge this board, believe me, if I wasn't going to Florida, I would run for selectmen again. I don't know if I'd get elected, but I would try. And my theme would be a grant writer. Let's go after that money. In the education field, anybody that's been involved in education, school departments go after grants all the time and they have somebody that's usually writing those grants so that they go after additional money to help the freighter costs. I'm not, I'm not saying we're not trying our best. I'm sure we are and I'm sure we've gotten some nice grants. But I contend that we could get many more and take the burden off of the taxpayer. Just a couple of more things. Do you folks have anything to do with the tax, uh, tax department, the bills going out? Do you have anything to do, does the select board have any say or is that just them that decide? My complaint is, I talked to seniors, I'm almost eighty-two years old. Next month, I'll be eighty-two years old. I was talking to my eighty-eight-year-old friend today, okay? We're having coffee, but we, we hold court three days a week up at Dunkin' Donuts from seven to nine, if you want to come up and learn anything. So anyway, and like me, the first year with the, um, getting two tax, tax things, two tax bills in one envelope, we missed the second one. We weren't aware of that. Now, I'm willing, I am willing to give a, a book of stamps to the town of Rutland so that they'll mail me my bill when it's due, not six months before it's due. It just, you put in the draw sometimes, you forget, it just doesn't make any sense. And I'm wondering how many senior citizens like myself, I did miss one bill. No, we made it up and we know we're not gonna do it again. But stuff like that. So I was just wondering if you guys had any say there or maybe I should take up this with the new treasurer. Uh, you're looking at me, you're all staring at me, so I guess I should talk to him. Okay, I'll talk to him.
And that, I believe, was a, a, it's been that way since I've been in town and so.
Okay, I don't remember, you know, I was a selectman, I got off in two thousand six.
It was probably that way when you were on the board loop.
And I don't remember how, you know, whether we had any say. I know, um, I know, you know, the town treasurer collector used to come to all our meetings, et cetera. Back in those days, they were, they would come to our meetings. And so, you know, we had a go give and take on all the time with them, so, uh, uh, we had quite a few people who used to come to our meetings. But, so I'll, I'll, I'll talk with that, I just think it's, it's difficult, you know, I wonder how many people have missed payments and then get a fine? You know? Just doesn't, doesn't sound right. I've always felt that the job of the town is to get me the bill, then my job is to pay. But when the bill came and we put it, bill one we paid, bill two we put in the drawer and forgot about bill two, you know? It's, it didn't show up in the mail. Anyway, I don't know how much money we're saving the town and I'd be more than happy to give a book of stamps to help, help the cause. One last thing, I heard you talking about committees and the discussion on committees. The last two years, I've noticed on that beautiful board, a Bolton board out here, the, the electronic board outside. Which by the way, I feel very good about, cause I was instrumental in pushing you guys to get it, remember we had a, we were gonna have a motion and then you guys came up with some grant? Was it grant money?
Yes.
Wow, matching grant money. So we have that beautiful board out there and I see it's, it says, looking for committees. So I have stepped up either by phone or coming into the selectman's office and I said, I've got some experience. I was a selectman for nine years, I was a teacher for twenty years, I understand school budgets. I was a union rep for twenty-five years, I went, I understand budgets and stuff like that. I'm willing to go on any committee, I may be gone for a few months in the winter, but you know, I'm sure you can get along a couple of months without me. When I'm, I'm back, I'll be raring to go. I guess my question is, are all the committees and all of the commissions filled? All have been filled? Yes?
No.
No, so there's openings. So I guess, I, maybe, I shouldn't use the wrong word. I probably caused problems for some people and no, so people don't want me there. But here's an example of someone who wants to help and yet, no one's called me. I mean, I, I'm a pretty strong guy, so I'll, I'll survive the snub. But when people wanna volunteer and you're looking for volunteers, they'll fit in. And if they don't fit in, you can always un-volunteer them. But when people are saying, yeah, we'll help, and then you don't get a, a phone call, I wonder how many other people are in a position like me? Or maybe I'm the only one, I don't know. So anyway, that's a few things I'd like to share with you people tonight, if you wanna ask me any questions, fine, if not, I'll leave you to your meetings. I don't wanna keep Danny hanging up there, he's waiting on the phone to talk. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we've had quite a successful year of grants. Austin, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Yeah, so the, the past year alone, about a million and a half dollars in grants, before that, two million dollars. Give a lot of credit to all of our department heads and, and general staff that do, I think, a great job. As you know, one of the challenges with grants is they're not sustainable, so we can't rely on those for operational funding sources. Best per capital and major projects. But also, a lot of these require planning documents and projects to be shovel-ready. We have lots of ideas, but not a lot of projects that are ready to be funded and that's the biggest challenge that we have with all of our grants. Don't disagree with you, state and federal, there's a lot of money out there. I and we have applied for probably every program imaginable. And a lot of the response that we get back is, great project, just not ready.
Great project, just not ready.
Correct.
And is there somebody following up on those? I think you have to haunt these people. See, I think a, a grant writer, someone like be in McGovern's office all the time or be in Ferguson's office all the time, getting on their back. The squeaky wheel, the squeaking wheel makes, gets the grease.
Well, here's, here's a perfect record, uh, perfect example. Our water treatment plant probably has about, I'm gonna round up and say about eight million dollars in capital needs. I applied for it with the most recent Masworks grant. And the response I got back is, where's your engineered designs? Where's your engineered plans? Have you done a feasibility study? So I'm happy to say, included in the pending economic development bond bill, we have a two hundred thousand dollar study to be funded by a grant, by the bond bill.
Good.
To prepare engineered plans.
Good.
Also included in that same bill is fifty thousand dollars to conceptually redesign the intersections at Maple and Main and Palmagosa. A project that's, I think, been long overdue and needed to be addressed, Main Street, essentially.
I understand.
So we, I think, do our best to try to get.
Any roundabouts?
We'll see.
Good.
But that's why we have to, we have to kind of spend a little money or prepare before we can be competitive.
I understand that, but that's money well spent to, to, if you have to add, uh, give a little to get a, a ton back. If that's the problem, then we, we should, we should be, we should have a position that's working to come up with these plans.
Yeah, well, a grant writer is not gonna prepare.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that, I understand.
Just one more note, so I'm gonna defer to my fire chief or our, your fire chief. The most recent lighted fire truck that was funded by town meeting, thanks to the voters at town meeting. We did apply for, we haven't, we haven't heard back on that grant, but just to show you how competitive, chief, how many people apply for that every year?
So out of forty-nine thousand fire departments nationwide, only three hundred received the grant. And three years ago, we received the grant to buy an ambulance. The town had to contribute fourteen thousand dollars and the town received three hundred thousand from the federal government. So we were one of three hundred nationwide, that's how competitive it is, out of forty-nine thousand fire departments.
Oh, I understand that, I understand the competitive, everybody's out there fighting for it. I mean, we, like I said, when I, my, I think it was my last year or next to last year, so this is oh five oh six, that I think we got the tanker truck.
Correct.
So, you know, we went after, we pounded on McGovern's door and he came through for us, you know, and I understand we're not gonna get it all the time. But I just feel that, and, and not again, I have nothing against the planning, uh, per planning job or the human resource job. But I, me personally, I think someone involved with grants, at this point in the, in, in our town, with less than ten thousand people. With less than ten thousand, less than a hundred employees, full-time employees. We need to be concentrating and chasing every dime we can. But I, I understand what you're saying. I, I'm not saying that this is like just snap your finger and it's gonna happen. I, I was, I realized, I remember when I was a selectman, we would talk about stuff like that and we had to have plans and stuff like that, you know, when we built the schools and things like that. Anyway, I'm just gonna keep yelling about that until they, until they put me in Saint John Cemetery, because I just believe it's something we should be after. And if my wife decides not to go to Florida, maybe I'll run again and then I'll be up there yelling about it. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comments, online for public comments? Okay, moving into communications, member comments, announcements, and Austin, if you don't mind. Holding town minister to update until after at least the old business, is that okay?
Uh, sure, I mean, it's very brief.
Okay, then we'll include it now, that's right. Um, I just have a very brief, um, kind of member opening or whatever, um, we're most away through July, it's hard to believe. It's been a busy couple of weeks on, on the public safety side. Um, so thank you for all of our public safety employees, for all the work that they've been doing. As well as recreation has been rocking it with summer camp and the pool, I think the pool has been sold out more days than not. The weather has helped us a lot with that, so, so thank you to kind of all of our employees who have been, um, keeping everything moving forward. It's been a busy, busy season, it doesn't seem like summer has really let up at all. And I wanna offer our congratulations to Austin and Kathleen for, uh, their wedding, um, last week. So congratulations, Austin, and welcome Kathleen to the Rutland family as well, thank you.
Congratulations.
I think we have the, uh, Rutland Wusox Day is coming up, um, April, or, August fourth, Sunday, August fourth. At one oh five P M. Those, uh, tickets, I believe, are on, available through the, a link through the website, all the information is there. It's a fun, it's a fun time, so if you're looking for something fun to do on Sunday, August fourth. Please join us at the ballpark in Worcester. The Friday night concerts are still going on, um, we've had a couple of nice Friday nights weather-wise, so it's been nice to be able to get back out and enjoy those. Thank you to the events committee and all the sponsors, um, the bands and the vendors as well, and everyone for making it a fun and successful time. So, thank you all.
Quick question, the baseball one is that were we all gonna be in the same block? Or you threw out the field?
You can pick your seats wherever you want to.
Well, cause I think I'd like to go. But we're not gonna sit together and cheer Rutland and cheer Wusox? I'm a Yankee fan anyways, so I'm cheering, too hard for the Red Sox, but I will cheer for Rutland.
When I was there the other year, we kind of, Rutland kind of had seats together, did that change?
Yeah, so they have certain areas, I think, but I think it end, you end up being where you have, uh, maybe two or three areas where you'll find a lot of Rutland folks. But just remember, this is also sharing with the town of Sterling, so you may be co-mingled, if you will, with some.
Okay, but we had its sections.
Yep.
Oh, good, August fourth, right?
Yep, and it's Sunday afternoon game, I think one oh five start. Um, and there's a lot of Rutland participants in the, um, in the ser- opening, opening ceremony, yeah, opening, pregame ceremonies.
Five dollars from every ticket sale goes, uh, to Overlook Farm, this year is the nonprofit.
Very good.
Yeah.
Speaking of, what was dinner, it's not here tonight. Is he all right?
He's all right, I just saw him a couple of days ago.
Okay.
So that's, um, any other members have any comments? All right, Austin, into your update, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair, um, and thank you for the, um, very nice comments, it's been an interesting week. The amount of times this thing has fallen off my finger with washing my hands, I don't wear rings at all and just happened outside and I was like, you know, thank God the drain is closed. But, um, thank you. Just a couple of updates, uh, we have a new building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, Harold Lemming. He previously assisted Rutland as a state building official for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for many years, also previous experience as a selectman. Lou, so make sure to introduce yourself as a.
Who was the gentleman?
His name is Harold Lemming, started today. And brings a, a wealth of knowledge, obviously has experience as a, a state building official and also worked in previous communities as a building commissioner as well. I know, uh, the fire chief and our fellow inspect, uh, additional inspectors are very happy to be working with Harold. You may have noticed if you went down Miles Road, the paving is complete, so that project is closed out. So there was some settling with the trench over the winter, so they decided to pave essentially the entire half of the road after that was a, kind of a messy water main replacement project, so that project is complete. We also added some burn to assist with some stormwater runoff that was occurring down that, down Miles. Happy to say the electrical panel replacement and upgrade project at Naqog Elementary is complete as well, closing out that article shortly. Some additional project updates, the public safety facility and library roof repair project is still ongoing. Couple of requested change orders that we are considering, um, just to consider the long-term impacts of, um, the sustainability of the roof. Especially after spending a significant amount of town resources on, uh, on that project. You may have noticed, um, last week, DPW started work on some of the parking lot improvements to Memorial Field Municipal Lot. The parking lot for the wood studio and the parking lot, um, for the old fire station, uh, in preparation of, um, paving to improve the condition of those parking facilities as well. The security system, uh, camera and, and access control installation project is ongoing, I believe now, this week they're in Naqog. They've completed the wiring in Central Tree, working on Naqog, um, and I believe they'll be in Glenwood next week to complete the wiring. We had a, a call with the IT folks today, uh, to make sure that all the devices are configured, so essentially we just plugged them in, they're ready to go. And then, um, essentially the first two weeks of August, we'll be testing and making sure that all the users that, uh, need to have access have proper access. To control the system. We also had a, um, school facilities walkthrough at Glenwood Elementary, this is sponsored, sponsored. Facilitated by the, um, Facilities and Finance Subcommittee of the Wachusett, uh, School Committee. We walked through Glenwood today, uh, representatives from Senator Durant's office and Rep. Ferguson's office were also present to make sure that we can competitive applying for. Uh, state support, um, from some of our state partners. One of the things that we made sure to really highlight, um, was, um, some of the facade issues with Glenwood. As you know, there's just something going on with the, the brick facade there at Glenwood, so we really wanted to make sure that the legislative delegation was aware of that. Not sure if there's any relation to some of the concrete, uh, issues that have been occurring across the Commonwealth in New England. And just, uh, just wanna note publicly to everyone that the bylaws that were accepted at the special town meeting are now in effect as they were accepted by the attorney general's office. You can find all the bylaws, they're now published on the town website, if you visit rutlandma.gov slash bylaws. There's a direct link, um, to the newly posted and adopted general bylaws. That's it.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for, comments for, um, the town administrator?
I just have one, Austin, if I may, for, in, talking about the roofs, I wanna be really mindful of, of, um. What the investment would be now versus the continual ongoing, I feel like since I've moved to town, we've had some roof articles on free cash. Every, almost every fall, if not every some, spring as well. And so I think we have a company here doing the work, um, and if we can manage to swing, getting them done properly and long-term. More long-term sustainably rather than every, every year, every six months, throwing more money in and having to go out to bid again and having it piecemealed. I would be supportive of that.
I agree with you, thank you.
Anyone else? Moving into old business, thank you, Austin. We have the board and committee, uh, point, board and commission appointments, consideration of candidates for capital improvement planning committee. This is an ongoing continuation from our, um, previous meeting. We are currently in, um, there are currently three vacancies on the commission, on the committee, on CIPC. Two that had, uh, the terms had expired, um, and then one last meeting, we had accepted a resignation from an existing member. So we have three openings and the board is in, um, receipt of four, five applications. And so this, I believe, um, we had asked CIPC, the members of CIPC. To be in attendance as well, since there's not currently a quorum with the vacancies on the seat, so that any conversation can be inclusive of CIPC. Existing members of CIPC as well. We have, um, two candidates for reappointment, um, Mr. Britton Bradford, we have his information. Um, and Mr. Daniel Gracie, um, who is on Zoom. Thank you for both ten, being in attendance. Um, and then we have three new applicants, um, for folks whom are interested. We have Mr. Michael DeBaracus, um, unfortunately, he has a prior commitment and is unable to, um, be on Zoom or in, um, attendance. We have, um, uh, Dr. Susan Lopez, who is here and I believe the recommendation of the CIPC chair. And we have, uh, Dr. Ludwig Haber, who is also here. And that, I believe, came in earlier today as a letter of interest. So I will open up the floor for conversation. I also, again, it seems to me that there may still be some interest out there, we don't know for sure. And again, just asking anybody who's interested to kind of go through the office, but that's the, um. I think the hope is to appoint tonight, um, but if the board has concerns or anything, um. Unfortunately, we don't have to and it just is, CIPC isn't, um, able to meet with a quorum as of, until we have appointed members. So, that's the. So I think, um, thank you all for, for being here, I appreciate everyone's attendance. And from a CIPC perspective, I guess, um, Harry and Chris, I think both of you are the currently seated members on CIPC. So, um, I guess, I kind of personally, and then the board, I think, would be interested in hearing kind of the direction of CIPC. In the upcoming year, kind of, um, so that we have the pool of applicants and everything as well. So.
I'm, I'm not so sure what you mean, I mean, from my perspective, I've tried to follow the mission statement every year. So I mean, that's kind of what my, my mission is for going forward. Uh, I do have a copy of it here, if you would like me to read it, for the record.
Um.
Here we go. I've got it. You have it?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, mission statement. The mission of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee is to provide the town of Rutland with recommendations that will enable the town to make planned and consistent decisions for the capital projects and improvements of its capital needs now and into the future. The framework will permit the recommendations and scheduling of funding sources to keep the tax rate stable, balanced debt service, and operating expenses, determine available debt capacity and acceptable debt service levels, and maximize intergovernmental aid for capital expenditures, what Louis was talking about. Form of grants. So, uh, other than the five-year project, which we've been working on for every year, and looking at the capital assets that come in for our review and following the state's criteria for evaluating those assets, uh, I don't know how much more. You can ask me questions. I don't know how much more to add to that. We, over the last fifteen years, I'm gonna say, we have been pretty staunch, and you can ask anybody. We've been pretty staunch about following the state's system that was recommended to us uh through their manual to rate projects that come before the finance committee, the town administrator, and the select board. So, that's kind of a non-political thing because that keeps us from getting into any type of political issue by the way we rate those things.
Um, does the board have any, um, so in currently, we have a reappoint reappointment applications from um Mr. Bradford and Mr. Gracie. Um, and you both, I think, have served on the board. Britten, go ahead if you may.
Yo, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've had served on the board for about a little over a year now.
Sorry. Yep.
Yeah, and to Mr. Segman's point, it is, um, it's it's a very straightforward system. I enjoy serving on that board. I think it's it's very cut and dry. Either it fits it fits our criteria or it doesn't. Um, there's a little bit of opinion, a little bit of discussion, but um, eh eh for the most part, it's it's pretty straightforward. If anybody's looked at the valuation system that we use, um, including the chief here recently, I mean, it it's pretty straightforward. Um, there's a little bit of opinion, but at at the end of the day, it's, does it benefit the town of Rutland? Is it an emergency item? Is it not? Um, I love this board. It's a lot of fun. I'd love to serve again. Um, I think I bring a lot of value, especially in the means of um building maintenance, uh, construction, things like that. So contractors, not that we review contracts, but just an overall understanding of budgets and where things are for those items. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Gracie, I'm not sure if you can hear us. Do you have a little blurb or I think you're a candidate for reappointment as well. I think you've been on the on the committee for a a few years.
I wanna say, ca- can you hear me okay, first of all?
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, I I wanna say it's seven years now, so I I think that at this point puts me as second most senior after Harry. So, started as a member for the first several years and vice chair now, I think approximately one year. Um, so I've seen some shifts in the makeup of the committee as well as some of the procedures. Um, I think we've streamlined a lot of things. Uh, we've seen a lot of variability, probably over the last three or four years with some changes related to COVID and some uh extra funding that's come in through through the committee for various reasons. So I I am interested in serving another term. Um, I would submit that it would be I I'd be interested in answering any other questions, um, but beyond that, I think it's uh, I would be a good fit for for another term and would request reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have a, um, Dr. Lopez. Do you mind giving us a little blurb?
To the chair, uh, I didn't prepare a blurb per se, but that's okay. I'm happy to talk.
Sorry. That's fine.
Uh, I think my background in terms of budgets and working on CIP projects and planning going forward, I'd be an asset to Rutland and being able to bring a different perspective. Um, in terms of looking at the value rating systems and reading through what the town of Rutland's been doing, I think coming to it with an open sense and an open mind and also um being able to look at all the stakeholders, it gives a different perspective. I don't have a person or people that are here that are vying for different funds, but to be able to look at the rating system, the way it's uh laid out really seems to make it standard across the board, so I'd be able to, I think, add to what seems like a really strong team and be able to make some good input for the decisions that eventually go to you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Haber.
Hi, my name is Ludwig Haber. I've been in town since two thousand and eight. Um, I'm an engineer by trade. Um, got all three degrees from Virginia Tech, but moved but started, actually went to Wachusett Regional, um, from Princeton. Um, and I think, you know, I I can, I was a president of uh Mountain Club Soccer for two years. I really enjoy giving back to the community. Um, that's a a range of engineering leadership positions that have put me in touch with lots of sort of long-term planning problems and how to organize that. And I think that's where I could uh help provide um um useful ideas and 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 good input to the committee. But I also understand there's a lot to learn, right? Um, the engineering budget is not the same as a municipal budget. So, um, you know, I eager to contribute to to what I agree is a pretty strong team.
And, um, I just for the public information, I just wanted to, Mr. DeBaracus has a prior commitment, was unable to attend. Um, he, in his letter, um, for hi- on his application submitted through the office, um, he provided additional information, and if I may read it briefly, since, um, Chris and Harry, have you guys as CIPC seen all of all of this as well? Okay, so I wanted to make sure that you both had opportunity to see it as well. Um, and so s- eh said quote stated, as I stated in my previous letter of intent, I want to serve on CIPC because of my strong desire to work to help and work to improve this wonderful town of ours. I attended a CIPC meeting in May and have read through the five-year capital improvement plan a few times, all of which strengthened my conviction that I would be a positive, strong positive asset for the committee. At the time, I did not know I needed to supply work, history, education, et cetera, so for the record, let me sum up fifty years of work as best I can, mostly directly showing I am capable of serving on this committee. I do not have a college degree, but have completed many courses. My strength is in administration. In the military, I managed change po- change policy in the scheduling section of security and law enforcement squadrons, which greatly improved personnel making, scheduled appointments. I have held management positions several times and managed budgets as part of my job as well. For ten years, I served as a church junior ward in responsible buildings and grounds, which required me to write a yearly report. This includes capital improvements, times I needed to negotiate bids and delay, et cetera, and submit this to the vestry for approval. I'm now retired and have the time, desire, and knowledge to serve on this committee. I hope this added information is enough for you to give me a strong consideration for this position. Sorry that I'm unable to attend the July twenty-second meeting, but feel free to contact me if you need more information. Thank you. So, I think we have five very strong candidates, um, for three, three positions. Um, I think my, um, my hope is that we continue to see a a list of all the projects that are vetted and not just the top one or two or whatever seems to potentially have viability for funding. I think um in previous iterations, we had talked about maybe eh even if it goes through, if a project or all of the work goes through CIPC, depending on how funding comes through, um, eh we may be able to cross off some of the lesser ranked and also lesser expensive projects to get them through and moved on. We know the longer they sit on the list, the more expensive they get.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so sometimes we've had a mentality or it's fe- it's felt like we've had a mentality where we're going to save our way to something and then nothing gets done and things just can expenses just continue to balloon. Um, so trying to be mindful that it's it's a dynamic, um, I I view it as a dynamic relationship and we value the 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 ranking and the work that you all do and also knowing that we need to have, um, as a town, not us, but as a town, have, um, some some latitude to say, we have this this money that could could fit this project can is is that amenable solution.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I hope that we can continue to see kind of the the holistic list of all of the projects and not just the top one or two that ultimately may be put forward for.
If I might, Chair?
Sure.
Uh, working with the town administrator, I think we effectively did that last year. We looked at a lot of stuff. We've also rescheduled our rating system. We felt that for years, there were things that were being applied in the rating system to or to uh equity stuff that didn't rate high. So what we did was, we changed the rating system to start giving an extra point for every year that it did not get rated. So now that moves it up the list of the raider, so it becomes fair, not political, but fair in terms of what we look at when we recommend to the finance committee, TA, and the board.
And I personally, just for myself, need to put out there, and you know what I'm gonna say, as a non-political board, there would be, there could potentially be two elected political politically elected individuals on that board. I know it's been that way in the past as well. Um, I just, and you know, I have that conversation.
Oh, I think, I I agree with you. I think there's a lot of politics in town, so the way our system works completely eliminates that.
Um, so. So.
Completely on, unless somebody disagrees with me, we've we've really fine tuned that to where we don't don't have to be involved that way.
Um, so does, um, Paul, do you have any questions or comments for for the candidates or for CIPC, um, the, you know, Chris or Harry or?
Okay, wearing my other hat as a cable television person, I have recorded a number of meetings of the CIPC, and so I have to agree with the fact that, you know, it is non-political. There's basically a point system that's applied to all of the projects, and so these things seem to be moving forward with um a certain amount of aplomb, and um I really can't say that I can see that there's anything that needs to be changed as far as the procedure is concerned.
Um, can I ask, just from my own knowledge, I I know a lot of the capital improvements are on, uh, you know, a lot of buildings, infrastructure changes that are needed. Is there any intersection with um CIPC and recreation?
Uh, sure. I mean, so I think as a part of the annual capital planning process, we do a call for uh submission of projects from all departments.
Yep.
Um, present that into a package for CIPC to consider. Um, I think last year was my first year as town administrator here and working and trying to refine the capital planning process a little bit. There's certainly some projects that I wanted to receive from all departments. Um, and I think I'm looking to be a little bit more proactive this year with all departments, um, to start a little bit early um, and get projects on um the town's radar, uh, especially for consideration by CIPC. So, so, long answer, but yes.
Uh, if if I might, one of the criteria that kind of, maybe it isn't fair, but that has been established is the dollar value of the equity things we look at. It used to be ten thousand, now it's twenty-five thousand. So some stuff that comes to us that might have an immediate need doesn't fall under our purview. That's one of, that was a hard decision for us to make, cause we do, but ten thousand was started back in two thousand and eight and it's never been adjusted for inflation. So, that was one of the changes, we're sorry to say, for some of the projects.
How how many non-emergent projects have we have gone through that we've been able to complete?
Um, well, again, I think that emergent depends on what you wanted to find as, I think every department will say that all of their projects are emergent and must be funded yesterday.
Yeah, I guess.
But, um, you know, I think, uh, I think this year we had a just over, I'm gonna round up and say two and a half million dollar capital uh budget. Um, some of those included, um, technology upgrades, security upgrades, ADA upgrades, infrastructure upgrades, so.
Equipment.
There was a equipment upgrades, um, yeah, so there so there was a healthy mix of, I think, projects that maybe historically have fallen under that threshold and maybe didn't get rated, but we had funds and we wanted to get projects off that list. But it's also to, you know, I think we also were fortunate to have some resources to be able to have a healthy capital budget this year. But again, it's really dependent on the deliverative profit process of CIPC, what we have for resources and ultimately what town meeting ends up approving. I think this year there was, I was happy to see that there was.
Pretty much everything.
Yeah, every, yeah, everything was funded, everything was considered, um, and then obviously we had to go through and refine some things.
Even the fire truck went through this year.
Even the fire truck, yep. Um, you know, I, we have forty million dol- as of last year, we have forty million dollars in capital needs. And I think we all know that that's not even reflective of the true number. We know that there's much more than forty million dollars in capital needs here, so. Um, I think we'll, Harry, you may have to take a look at that twenty-five thousand number and maybe boost it up a little bit. Sorry. Um, twenty-five thousand is still low, and I don't even think that's reflective of increase of inflation, so.
I mean, we, and again.
I think that's a state requirement though, right? The twenty-five thou- oh, no, it's a local. No.
That's currently now, that's up to the board.
Yeah.
Ten thousand, yeah, it's a state.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it really depends on the community. Some have a hundred, maybe we could do a million.
What, uh, for some people who might might not. Our threshold says that anything under twenty-five thousand has to go through the town in a different way. Anything over twenty-five thousand, twenty-five or more has to come through CIPC to be vetted. Below that, it doesn't have to be vetted, it can just be applied for. That's the difference. So, if we raise it to fifty thousand or a hundred, that just means now that we're looking at bigger capital expenditures that have to be vetted through the committee versus just going to be applied for to the town. So, a- and again, it's up to the board if we change the number. That's our best policy, so.
One thing that I think is nice about this process is it um only reflects projects that need to be appropriated by town meeting. Um, so to my friend, well, he left, but uh to my friend's point and question about grants, if we get, which we just did, we get a million dollar grant to replace the CAD system uh in dispatch, that wasn't on the capital plan. Um, because that was identified as a need by the dispatch operation and we're successful in receiving support from a state funding source, so. It also allows us to be flexible and not have to rely on um the process to go through CIPC to be able to apply for grants.
Well, again, Jen, what I would say is to Harry's point, that the point system is is very fair. If it ranks high, you know, yeah, your your top four, your top five, eventually, there's not enough money. You know, it's still ranked high, but it goes into next year and now it's funneled out. So the key is with that ranking, and the key is, we all come to, we all have our strengths, our weaknesses, our backgrounds, have a diverse background, be able to speak intelligently upon trucks, about, you know, the buildings, about, you know, paving, anything, you know, that's coming in. So if the board says, oh, this is ranked low, we don't know anything about it, somebody's strength can be to talk and boost that rating and get it higher up. So I think the key is to have a diverse group of people with expertise in as many different areas as you can to get a true feel for what is important to them, the people in town that they know, you know, their their experiences and their background. Uh, you know, I really, as far as the rating system and everything else, it all kind of falls into place once everybody agrees what that rating is and has their input to what what number it should get.
I think Austin did a very good job last year of bringing in capital stuff. And Ron, the year before, did a great job of organizing things and looking at stuff because for years, we would send out notices to committees and boards to ask for their requests. And we would get, I'd say, on average, the police, the fire, and DPW. That was it. So, you know, we'd put letters out, we'd put stuff in the mailboxes, we worked hard to bring stuff in. So when it went, when it changed, and Margaret changed to go through her to do this, so it fell through the town administrator over the years, it's been gradually getting better and better that we have more and more equity decisions to make. It's been gradually getting better and better that we have more and more equity decisions to make on stuff that's coming before the committee. So it really does work good. And I gotta, you know, I, I, I don't wanna say this, kinda like a proud Papa, if you will, but I got a good committee. Uh, we have our differences of opinions, but at the end, we all discuss and rate. And that rating is approved by everybody.
Um, if I may, can I just ask, how how do you incorporate your experience, your expertise using the rating system to decide what?
So, to, to get to that rating, there's, we bumped it. It was ten, ten criteria, now I think it's fifteen, so you know, you, you average it up, and I think your max is, is eighty points now. Um, you know, mixing the old system with, with the new one that, that Austin had said, so it's, it's not like we're just arbitrarily coming up with a number, it's on, on item one through fifteen, you give it a, a zero through ten, or a zero, five, ten. He says ten, I say five. Everybody is, you know, maybe we just give it an eight, but you know, why, why do I say five and he says ten? He's got a background in building, he knows, to your point, down the road, this is gonna cost twice as much. This is something that we need to do now, it's, you know, his background versus, versus my background. Um, you know, and you can talk to that, to, to, you know, your expertise and try to sway somebody to know, we really should, this should be a ten. And, and we'll have a discussion and, and, you know, majority votes, and then, like I said, at the end of fifteen criteria, you, you you know, fifty points for the fire truck, ten points for another, you know, and it, and it kind of falls down the line, and then you've got your your top four or five, we know what it's gonna, what the cost is, and you keep plugging down the list until there's nothing, there's nothing left or the money's out.
You know, if I might.
If I could follow up too on that?
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I, I think the question has something to do with what the individual members bring in terms of their backgrounds to this um, discussion, and I, I think from my perspective, the, our, our backgrounds and our, our expertise comes into play more in the discussion and the questioning regarding the requests, rather than the actual application of the criteria to the rating system itself, which I do agree with Chris and Harry is a more objective system, but when we first get requests and we're trying to learn more about them, we might have the requestor come in and explain what they're looking for and why they're looking for it. Uh, that's open to discussion and open to questioning, and that's where we might trade off in terms of our background and expertise, in terms of guiding that discussion and guiding that questioning to get to the place where we wanna be.
I think, sorry, Dan, if I may, what's, um, do you have a little bit on your background?
Yeah, I, I'm a lawyer by training. I, I've been a lawyer for twenty years. I also have an MBA, so I, I have some business background as well.
Thank you. Um, so if I, the, um, two seats would be, um, three-year terms, and then the third seat is, uh, filling the vacancy. Um, and I think historically, we have done that as the one-year appointment or to finish out the vacant term. Um, so then there would be a, a one-year seating, um, and that would then be, uh, uh, opening in next fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just looking at that, yeah, the sheet. Um, and again, it's kind of at the, the with the like of the committee or of the board, um, we have don't need to reappoint existing members, we can, um, in instances in the past where we've had um, more candidates than this is a nice problem to have, but one that we're not accustomed to having, um, at all. Um, we know, I think we have Harry's, um, uh, recommendation for, um, Dr. Lopez, um, I don't know that, um, uh, I think the committee just would have seen, um, Dr. Haber's information today, and then, um, uh, Mr. Devarikas's information was, I think, sent around
Mm-hmm.
last week maybe. Um, so I think from a, a CIPC standing, we also wanna be mindful kind of as you we have in, we have the five-year plan, and we know kind of what's, what's in the five-year plan, but also kind of where things are looking towards, um, also, and what priorities may have and everything, so I wanna be mindful of that as well.
Uh, and I might need some, remind some of that, but like, like you said, this is kind of a, a good problem to have, and the more I am learning more about CIPC, it seems like having that broad experience, all the different, Harry's the financial guy, Britton's construction, Chris, I don't know your background as much, but I know you're not a pretty. You've got.
He looks good.
I just take notes, I'm, I'm just.
But we had the attorney side, the, the lawyer, we have an engineer, we have the school, like, there's so much wealth of knowledge here, and I feel like every single one of those is valuable perspectives to have on this committee. Uh, and you know, even Mike with his, his military and his project management experience, I mean, those are all big, so I guess my question for past, present members, those interested, where do you see the biggest need as far as experience to contribute to those conversations that you're having to that, for the things that you've seen upcoming or things that you think might be coming up?
I think education is going to be very important.
What's that, Dan?
Education, education-related issues.
Is this an open question? Okay. I think, uh, education, yes, education of the, also of the town, and uh, being very proactive with communication about what's coming down the pike, so that you can see uh, recommendations from the committee as, you know, part of a composite that builds a strategy that's gonna set us up for long-term health, so you understand, you might have a bitter pill to swallow next year, but you understand that that's what's really gonna set you up long-term, but that requires pretty significant communication to the town to make sure that they understand everything that, that, that we're up against.
For education, I, and I, this is not one of my strong suits, but beca, being in a district, I know we have some ability to fund our own projects, but a lot of them do have to go through the district, like how how many capital improvement projects do we have that are school-related?
Uh, most recent capital plan, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna keep rounding up and say we have about seven million dollars in capital needs from schools. Um, school, uh, business and, I keep changing the name, but business and facilities. Uh, subcommittee is actually contemplating the capital plan tomorrow. Um, so we will likely receive, uh, which is the earliest we've probably ever received a capital plan from the schools, um, within the next couple of weeks. Um, I do agree that education's gonna be a big one, especially with the most recent study that's been produced by the school district. I think they're gonna look at long-term planning. Obviously, we know that, um, we have one of the oldest schools in the district. Um, and we have three facilities just overall, um, out of the thirteen that have a lot of capital needs, so I, I do agree that ed- education's gonna be a big one. Um, I just also just wanna remind folks that we do have of this, you know, seven million in education, we have another, gonna round up and say forty-five, fifty million in, in town needs as well, so. Um, I think Brooklyn has done a lot of investment in education, um, maybe to the detriment then of our, some of our other departments and services and infrastructure overall.
If I might, when I, when I read the forecast that Wachusett put out in their long-range plan, I, I could see down the road that this was going to be a major expenditure that was going to be dealt with by CIPC. And so that was a major concern for me as to who could give me good advice on the committee, on the education. Yes, we've got Wachusett coming to us, yes, they're gonna send us some stuff, but I don't know the intricacies of that. So that was where I thought education, I agree with Dan, education is very important.
Can I just add to that? So just, uh, we have a, a lease agreement with the school district um, that shifts the responsibility of any project over thirty-five thousand to the town. So, as soon as it, it's thirty-five, um, we get a notification and it ends up being our responsibility. You recall, we had an emergency boiler replacement, um, last fiscal year. Um, so, well, I think we've asked the school district, especially in this capital planning process, to be a little bit more thoughtful about all of their projects, so thankfully, with this capital plan, they'll be including hot water heaters, boilers, some other things that may need to be replaced and not hopefully by an emergency nature, so we'll have a little bit more planning, but uh, that responsibility does shift, so just being mindful that probably the education number's gonna be growing as well, I think. And to Harry's point, though, I think the biggest thing that, when we're talking about capital and we're talking about big projects, I think the most important thing for CIPC, FinCom, Select Board, um, my office, all town departments to just be mindful of is, is I think the most I'm gonna use the word dangerous thing for this process, is when presenting to the people uncertainty about the future, right? What's the tax rate gonna be? You're talking about you know, maybe a hundred million dollar elementary school, and that's not the case, but let's just be hypothetical here. How's that gonna affect the tax rate? Right? We just borrowed almost two million dollars for a fire truck, how's that gonna impact the tax rate? So my goal for this year, to start working with, uh, CIPC and working with our new treasurer collectors to really do a thoughtful forecast about not only projects, their estimated cost, but what's that gonna be as a projected impact, right? If you're talking about forty million dollars for something, people have no idea really what that means to their tax bill, to their tax rate, so I'd like to expand on CIPC's report. Um, I think we had a very comprehensive, it was almost a hundred pages. See if we can double it, just kidding, but maybe.
I could add a lot of grants.
Yeah, add more projects, um, forecast, really show, okay, if you fund this, this and this, that's what, you know, that's what it's gonna look like to your tax bill, to your tax rate. Um, because I also think at the end of the day, that um, when you inform the people more about these projects, I think that gets you hopefully more support at the ballot box or at town meeting. Um, and that's just overall a good practice, if we're asking for money, really show them what that means in the long-term form, so, that's just one of my goals as well.
Um, so is the board comfortable tonight? Does the board want to, we've had, had a conversation with the candidates that are here. Um, does the board want to, to consider delaying the appointment until or con- continue forward? Um, how does this, does the boards?
Um, I guess my feeling is, we need to set a deadline. We can't keep reaching this out to August, September. We can't just keep waiting for people to come in, we have to make a decision. The CIPC has to get together. We have to start doing the work of the town.
And I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily suggesting delaying it forever, I only
That's my.
because, because we've had a conversation about this, as well as, um, kind of the future, kind of looking forward to the upcoming what the upcoming plan is going to look like. Um, so I wanted to make sure, and we don't have a member here tonight, but that's, I reached out to see if Tom had any
Yeah.
um, wants to have anything, and I didn't hear back, so I think he's fine either way.
I, I'm fine if we wanna continue and discuss candidates that we'd like to see, that's fine.
So we have, um, two, two, um, full-term seats um, that would, that are currently vacant by Mr. Gracie and Mr. Bradford. Um, we can talk about those two seats, and then we can talk about the third, that would be the one year to fill Mr. Ferguson's.
Okay.
Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Sure. Um.
Do we need a motion for this?
Mm-hmm.
So, we can continue the conversation for the two, three-year seats. Um, I think that these were the two, um, I think Mr. Gracie and Mr. Bradford are seeking reappointment to these two existing seats. Um, and then, um, but again, it's the board's purview, the, the select board as a whole's purview to decide, um, of the pool of candidates who's getting those seats, so. Um, I would entertain co- continue conversation, motion.
Um, in order not to drag this out, cause we've had several meetings on it, particularly last time, I would like to make a motion that we appoint uh, Britton Bradford, and we appoint Chris.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry, Chris, Daniel Gracie, thank you, Daniel Gracie, all this discussion is good. Daniel Grace me, uh, for reappointment to three-year terms.
We have a motion from Harry for Britton, um, and Dan. Is there a second?
May I just ask a question? Is there a conflict here with the board member making the motion being the chair of the current CIPC?
Not by law, it's not.
I think a general practice is, is when you're discussing something that you're
I mean.
um, involved in, even though there's no obviously financial, um, implication here, I think it is a good practice. To abstain, however, it's, I don't think it's mandated by law.
I mean, if somebody else wants to make the motion, um, I'll be happy.
So, we have a current motion, or if someone else. We don't have a second, so.
Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, yeah.
We have a motion and a second for the three-year term. Um, is there a conversation?
I'm not necessarily a- opposed to it, I'm not comfortable voting on a motion made by a sitting, seated member of the CIPC.
Paul, would you care to make a motion to appoint those two?
So.
I was under the assumption that the motion had been made, and I seconded it.
It was, but we have a member that's not comfortable with me making the motion.
So.
Uh.
Would there be a withdrawal of the second and of the, of the motion, and then I think Harry's asking you, Paul, if you would make, consider making a motion?
Unless we want to, and again, I, I understand wanting to seat everybody, but do we want to wait till we have a full board, so there's?
Why? Why? We vetted these people, this is the second time we've done it. Tom was here the last time. What, what is it, Jen? Wh- what, what are you, why don't you want to appoint good, qualified people tonight?
It has nothing to do with their, their abilities to seat. It has to do with the makeup of this board and who's making motions and who's involved.
Everybody has a right to make a motion, so.
I am not comfortable voting on a motion by you as a chair of the board that we're discussing.
Then I withdraw my motion and let somebody else make it.
Okay, which is fine, if someone is, is willing to do that.
I, these are my notes. These say not any.
No, I just wanted to know.
The gentleman's up there.
Yeah.
And Britton Bradford is back there.
Yeah, okay. I would, pardon me, would like to nominate Daniel Casey and Britton Bradford to serve on CIPC for terms of three years.
Mm-hmm.
These are three-year appointments, yeah. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, additional conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Second, I.
Matt said I.
I'm going to abstain.
I I I'm gonna abstain as well, given the, yeah. So, that's, stenchion is a
I think because the town, they don't have, we don't have an attorney, so the motion goes.
It's not in our room. I just want the town to see what went on tonight. In terms of, we talk about not politics. I'm very disappointed that two good members of CIPC being vetted and showing up here tonight did not get approved. And I still don't understand why.
So I think, if I may, for me, again, it's the a a process thing for me. Again, I continue to say it's a process thing. Um, and me yeah, I, it's not, again, any of the candidates, but it's
We've been through the process, Leah. Tell tell the town what it is about the process.
The process.
You said you didn't let me to know. Okay, I didn't. Paul did it. That was up for vote. The last time, we went through a laundry list of stuff. The process, we've gone through what the board wanted. What is it now that the town, you have to give to the town that we're not seeing? Two good people.
It's, if I may, for me, it has nothing to do with them. I would support both Britain and Dan being appointed.
If I wasn't the chair.
Where I have a problem is that you are part of the motions and you are a seated member of that board.
I wasn't a part of the motion.
Yes, you just seconded it.
I know. That's right.
You're a part of it.
I am allowed to second a motion as a member.
And and I am stating for myself.
Because I have no conflict of interest.
I disagree. I disagree.
The conflict of interest rules.
I, which I did, I'm I'm speaking for myself, Harry. You're a seated, you're a member of both boards. I have nothing against
I don't see. I'm not a board member. I'm a committee member.
Any of them. Right, but you're you're speaking as a select board member to appoint members to the committee that you are also seated on, that reports to this board.
I. You're right, but yet.
So it is what, it is my prerogative, if I may, it is my prerogative to choose whether to vote on the motion on the table.
You ask the questions, they explain.
With who has made the motions, I am choosing to abstain. It has nothing to do with the people that are being uh requested to being appointed. I think they're fully qualified. It's the manner in which it's being done that I don't agree with. So that's why.
So what is about me as the chair that you don't like?
It has nothing to do with you as the chair.
Jen, come on.
Harry, you are on the select board, seated as a select board member right now.
Absolutely.
You are asking and making a motion to appoint people to the board that you are also seated on and cheerful.
Who are current members that you vetted.
They're not current members. They're up for reappointment. And again, it has nothing to do with them. And I've said my piece.
Okay. Alright.
I will not vote on anything that has, that you have made a motion on for this particular one.
That has to do with me. Okay.
So we need to drag this out another month?
I still. No, I've I've made my vote.
Yeah. So now the committee won't meet, so Austin, you may have to run it or pull together, 'cause it's not me.
That's that's just this 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 motion.
That's what the board, that's what the board has decided, okay? That you're gonna hold up CIPC doing its job.
So we can entertain a motion to reconsider, I think, right? And then it would clear the the votes and someone else could make the motion in the second, I believe.
I think a motion to reconsider is only valid if there was a successful motion, which there wasn't.
Oh. I thought the losing side could, the could make the motion.
No, I think it's the, I think it's the the winning side that can reconsider.
The winning. Well, that, yeah, so Jenna, I.
Which there wasn't a successful motion.
There was no winning side. Um, so we could table it for when Tom is back and then we would have a five-member board in the next meeting. Um, we can move forward with the one-year appointment. We can go back to a three-year appointment and see if there's um a a different makeup or um consideration for the for the three years.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are we still gonna bring in, allow more people to apply for this when we have been through it twice already? Are we gonna extend this extension time for people to say, I wanna be on this committee and now we gotta vet more people? Or is this it tonight? If you haven't applied for the com- committee position, this closes it and it won't, you won't be considered.
Generally, anytime there's an any sort of opening, that it remains open until it's filled. And so it would be, um, I don't know that it would be actively advertised, but I think anyone could continue to apply because the position is the the seats are not filled.
And it's that way because the board chooses not to fill the seats.
I think the stru- the the concern tonight has been.
No, I'm just saying, you don't have to explain. I I I get it. I get it.
So is there um a motion for the one-year seat? Because that would then at the very least seat the committee as a um a functioning committee. So the one-year seat is to fill Mister Ferguson's seat, um. Or like I said, we can um wait until our August meeting and have a five
Another month.
A five, August fifth meeting, it's two weeks.
One week.
Um, have a five-member board. I would not expect the the um candidates who have already been here before us to to re-attend by any means, um.
They must re-attend. They have to re-attend by policy. They must be here at the appointment process.
And I'm just saying that we've already had the opportunity. This is because we wanna be able to interview them and everything. If we, if the board wants, um, I am happy to ask them to at least be on Zoom. Um, or I'm happy, I think the board has had the opportunity to have the conversation um tonight and we can ask Tom if he has any direct questions um to to reach out through the office, through.
I am on vacation on August fifth and will be out of the country, so I will not be able to attend.
Okay.
So you won't be appointed.
Um, and I don't, I wouldn't say that we've, there's been, even our last round of appointments, there were a member, there were individuals who were.
Doesn't matter, they didn't follow policy. And you're the one who says, we wanna do things right. We wanna follow protocol. We wanna follow the process. The process and the policy states, you must be here or on Zoom.
Uh.
I'll read it to you if you want. I mean, I think I had to, I'll read it.
I don't see anything here stating they have to attend the reappointment meeting.
What's that?
I don't see anything here that states they have to attend the reappointment meeting.
No, no, it's a new appointment. You said they don't have an, they're not a sitting anymore.
For a- a- any of them, reappointment or new appointment.
Okay.
I think it's uh the last bullet on procedure to fill vacancies, Jen, on page two.
Correct.
The last one?
I believe so. Represented from the board of committee and its recommended new member must attend the board's
Must attend.
meeting at which the appointment is made. It also says the board's selectmen must receive the board of committee's written recommendation on the appointment in the letter of interest from the resident prior to making the appointment.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Prior to the meeting.
And again, I'm, I've very much, and you know, and fa- want to follow policy and procedure. I also feel that tonight was the night that we had them here to ask the questions and to inter- to to conduct the interviews and so.
That's not what it says. With all due respect, Madam Chair, that is not what it says.
Okay. So then, okay, so, um. Previously, the board has made appointments with a simple motion as we put forth this time. This was when determined to be the wrong method. When there were candidates, the number of seats, each member should vote for the, for a member for the seat. So we could re-entertain motions for individual seats. Thank you, Sherry. So do we wanna do individual motions for each of the three-year seats? And then an individual 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 motion for the four-year seat? One year. Oh, sorry. Yeah, for the one-year seat. So we have one three-year seat, um, that is would was vacated by Mister Daniel Gracie um that would expire in three years. So is there a a conversation for a motion for that seat? Is the board looking to reappoint um Mister Gracie to his current seat? Paul, would.
I I'm in support of it. I just, I think I've made it clear, I'm not willing to vote on a motion that comes from Harry.
So Paul, do you entertain, are you willing to consider to break your motion up into individual one-year motion or three-year motions?
You wanna have a motion to appoint Daniel G- Gracie to a three-year term, is that correct?
Yep.
Alright, so moved.
Is there a second?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. Conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Can I vote? Since I can't make a motion, can I?
Well, that's your prerogative.
Can I vote? Well, in case I vote, yes.
Paul. Paul.
Yeah, Matt said I.
Ledger I.
Wait, man, I. Is there a motion, is the board um looking to reappoint Mister Bradford to the of seat vacated by Bradf- Mister Bradford uh for a three-year term in tw- uh expired in twenty twenty seven?
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Conversation, roll call. Harry?
Second, I.
Matt said I.
Ledger I.
Wait, man, I. We have the one-year seat now. There's three remaining candidates. Um, we have Doctor Lopez, Doctor Li- uh Doctor Haber and um Mister Tavargas. Um, we know all three of them bring a lot of varying um backgrounds to the to the table. Um, I think um Harry has made his letter known um in support of Doctor Lopez. Um, conversation or a motion?
I I can s- I I understand there's a lot when it comes to education educational needs. Um, I think of the remaining candidates. Um, I I find Mister Haber's en- engineering background um to be significant and that can be applied to a lot of the capital projects, including a lot of the um school capital needs as well. Um, so just a thought on my side.
Paul, do you have any um conversation about the, for the one-year um seat and then remaining before we look for a motion?
No.
You want a motion? I'll make a motion to nominate um Susan M. Lopez to the one-year position on CIPC.
So, so we have a motion, um, for Doctor Lopez, um. I was hoping to have a little bit more conversation, Paul, but that's okay. Um, there's a motion. Is there a second for Doctor Lopez?
Can I second?
Um, I think.
Since there's a reluctance on the board and I'm the one that recommended her, somebody needs to have a second.
So I I I wanna be clear, I think if you do second, based on the previous vote, when there was involvement um of of you in the motion, it it was a, it the, that motion went nowhere. It was a failed motion. I don't know if that's how this would play out or not. I would.
Well, I guess it's up to you, Madam Chairman.
I'll withdraw the motion if it makes you feel co- feel more comfortable.
Can we withdraw it and have a little bit more conversation?
I withdraw the motion.
For a little bit more conversation.
Fine.
So there's, I think all three of the candidates bring a lot to the table and we have heard kind of the roles and responsibilities of the 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 CIPC that it's not so, that there's a lot of varying moving pieces.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, Jen, you brought that the engineering piece that um Doctor Haber has is is as interesting kind of as the education piece that that Doctor Lopez has. Um, so I guess kind of from, um, maybe from even a a CIPC piece, is there, Chris or Harry? Do you see, uh, we have Harry's recommendation for Doctor Lopez. Is there a a education or a a piece that you see kind of as a stronger um um asset for the the committee? Knowing what's coming up in the future.
Not to put you on the spot, my public agenda is, so.
I'll.
Because ideally, we would, we hope oftentimes the committees have some conversation um also about about.
Uh, uh, no, I mean, to to everybody's point, obviously, education, feasibility, maintenance is all coming up. But I would say the on the horizon, the 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 most pressing need seems to be, you know, education piece of it, so. I I guess I would, I would lean that way, just do that back. We're also talking one year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um. So is there, so we have Harry's recommendation, we have, um. It's a one-year appointment. I'm just kind of reading, going back and forth, reading the the all the information.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
Pat Lettino Martin. We're skirting the whole issue here. The whole issue here is should an elected member of the board of selectmen be chairman of a committee where he is going to un- name people and vote for people on that committee? I've never known a selectman to be chairman of a committee within the town. Is it ethical to, uh, our conflict of interest? Is it ethical for an elected person to be chairman of a committee? That's the whole re- problem here.
Do you see it as a question of ethics?
Yes, I I take it, I I see it as a conflict of interest and I see it as ethics, yes.
Well.
I do.
I I guess somebody should explain the conflict of interest rule. Because I have no family member, I have no financial.
No, I understand that, but you are an elected member here on this board.
I am, I am an exempt member. Not only elected, I'm exempted member as well, correct?
I do, are you talking about like a special employee?
What's an exec- an executive? Exempt member.
Yeah, so well, also, selectmen under certain population are special municipal employees.
A special employee. Or special municipal employees.
I think that this discussion related, I think this came up briefly at the special town meeting where we're talking about finance committee where there's prohibition um of select board members or elected officials to serve on FinCom. I recall that there was a discussion about CIPC, as I think folks are aware, that discussion led nowhere and there was no amendment to that. So um technically, there's nothing in the statute nor our local bylaws that uh restricts elected officials from serving. Uh, we actually have two elected officials that serve on the CIPC. We have Britain um as an elected planning board member and we have uh Harry as a selectman. Uh, the committee, um, I don't know what the process for selecting chair looked like this year. Um, but as you know, committees are also encouraged and required to go through the process of selecting chair, vice chair. So I don't know what that looked like this year. If, Harry, if you were selected by your peers, I'm not sure, but.
Was I selected by my peers? Did I say I didn't want the job?
I think so, yeah.
So.
So in this case, you know, I think according to the law, though I'm not a lawyer. Dan will have to refer to you maybe. I don't know if you specialize in municipal law. Um. You know, I I don't think there appears to be a conflict uh according to the statute or anything that we have locally.
It's just putting all these volunteer people in a, in a, in a position they shouldn't be in when they're trying to volunteer for this committee in this town. Um, and it's putting them through anything they shouldn't go through.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree. Absolutely.
The only thing, and I'm just, I'm not saying that this is the case nor that I agree with it, but I uh could see the only possible challenge is uh select board, obviously, um in overseeing me and overseeing the finances um and endorsing the capital budget, is is there a possible consideration there of select board member, chair of a committee, guides the C I P C process, recommends that to the board upon which he's supposed to recommend or not recommend to town meeting, but again there's nothing that restricts that from occurring.
Thank you.
Um so I think we know we have the potential.
We have. As chairman, we have.
Sorry?
We had to review, I just have a question to Harry, has the C I P C met since July first? So there's has been no meeting that selected you as chairperson for F Y twenty five?
No.
Okay.
If I may, can I can I put you on the spot as to your thoughts on where you see the needs?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Um I it I think knowing that the education piece is coming up, I think that that's huge, but it's not to me the on- the only piece. Um and so I think there's s- there's strengths to having um a a uh more diverse, I think, um coverage. In reading through Doctor Lopez's um uh letter of interest, she has um the education piece, but also um some some strong kind of um community strategic planning, project management's um work as well. Um so I think the engineering piece is nice, knowing we have a a construction professional. Um Chris, again, I should know.
Yeah, no, it's it's fine. I'm so I uh similar to to Britten, I Britten's a contractor, but I work for a uh window and door manufacturer, I've got my degree in building materials and wood technology, so construction, I do a lot with small engines, cars, trucks, so the the vehicle portion of it.
Yeah.
Um it's kind of my stronger suit.
And then knowing Mister Gracie has the the attorney law piece and um uh Mister Sackman has the financial financial piece.
Mm-hmm.
Um I I think that there's value to and and then knowing that um Mister Taverkus who isn't here has a depth of of experience kind of on the on the attorney piece as well as the some of the project management and everything as well. Um so I see value in 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 all three of them, um all three of the candidates and so um it's you know, a one-year appointment and I would hope that um whomever is not put on still considers um looking for other opportunities or coming back for for next year um when we look at the appointments again.
Uh Madam Chair. Uh we didn't get your opinion, Britten.
Uh one second, I just I have a a question in regards to the makeup of the C I P C board, is there a maximum requirement?
Yeah.
Is five the maximum?
I'd like to get that changed.
And does the select board have the ability here within their powers to change that?
We have some really good candidates right now.
That's good.
Yeah.
I think it's a a darn shame shame to say, alright, we can only choose one, and I understand how this works, but with the C I P C, especially with all of the issues that we have coming in the future, we have an educational piece, we have DP uh obviously D P W fire emergency, we have some large things coming down the pipeline um that are huge and I think the more brains that look at it, the better. I I I'm not saying that that needs to be a decision tonight, but if it's something that's relatively easy for the board to do, could that be a consideration? Uh or is that a bylaw issue?
It's a bylaw.
It's a bylaw, there you go.
We'd have to change the bylaws.
I love bylaws.
I don't even know why we had five to begin with, it should really be six or seven. Uh that's my opinion.
It's what it is then. But I think it's a shame because we have some great talent here and I I'd love to see him on a C I P C board, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Um so that's my two cents.
Um so I think
Go ahead, Jed.
No?
No.
I was looking at um if it was to see if it was set by M G L, but I think it's bylaw, I don't think it's M G L.
Bylaw.
It's bylaw.
It's bylaw.
Um no, I wasn't sure because sometimes M G L says the the range or whatever, that's. Um so um okay, so we have one-year term um for three candidates.
Mm-hmm.
Um I think uh any one of them is going to make a a significant contribution to the committee um and I hope that um any the other two continue to kind of find find their space um in 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 municipal government in volunteer. Um so I think we are leaning towards, I think Paul was ready to make a motion, but I'm not sure if um the board has additional conversation um or. So Paul, do you have a motion?
Paul?
Do you have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Well, I withdrew the mo- motion, uh does anybody else care to make a motion of someone else, someone of this person or what?
I think we just wanted to withdraw it to have more conversation on the candidates.
She's asking if you wanna make a motion again.
Yeah, I know. Um I can, I guess. I will nominate Susan M Lopez to fill the one year of the remaining term.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Um if the recommendation of the other candidates and candidates for reappointment, I'll support and make a second.
We have a motion and a second, additional conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger I.
Waitman, I. So thank you for coming in and working with us through the process. Um Mister Haber, Doctor Haber and um Mister Taverkus, please try to find a spot in town. Um y- you bring a lot to to the community, so thank you.
Talk to us, yeah. Only transist every year.
Um new business, we have an I M A uh intermunicipal agreement between the oh, congratulations on your appointments and please stop in to see um the town clerk's office to get sworn in. Um you can't at officially attend any of the participate in any of the C I P meet- C meetings until you're officially sworn in. Um and I don't believe there's currently a meeting scheduled.
No, and that's an issue I need to either discuss with the board or with Austin and that since we just had a forum tonight, but they're not sworn in, as Chair can I set a date for the next meeting without their agreement?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think you can um.
Just make sure they're all ready to go.
Yeah.
Before your meeting.
Yeah.
And if, Tamika, if you don't mind.
I mean, I'll send the date out, I'll ask him what dates are comfortable for him, but you know, I just need to get going on it.
Facilitate. Harry, we can ask Tamika to facilitate that meeting just not on a.
Yeah, let's Ha- Ha- Harry's the chair, let him let him do it. I mean, I know he's not been voted chair, but um and just Harry, if I can be invited to those meetings, I'd like to participate.
Love you there.
Okay.
You'll know when they are, so.
Perfect.
You are official, you know?
I know.
Yeah. Thank you, and also I think it's it's valuable to have um the the collaboration work there, so in as we go forward, continue to put together the schedule plan and everything. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Dan, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your patience.
Aye.
In into the um new business, we have the I M A intermunicipal agreement lending of ambulance to town of Princeton. Um Good night.
Good evening. Um as you know, uh just over a month ago, we uh did the same I M A with the town of Hardrick and Westbrook Field. Um that transition went well, their ambulance is back in service, our ambulance came back. We used it all last week because our ambulance was out of service, so it was in um frontline for us. Um also uh last week, the town of Princeton lost their only ambulance due to an engine failure. Um but the delay in getting the paperwork and everything for this signed, um the truck's already back in service. What I would ask tonight is it's the same document as before, but I would just ask the board to vote to authorize Austin to sign this if the need arises in the future for the town of Princeton.
So it's our our old truck that we got back.
Correct.
That we used.
Yep.
Now we're giving it to Princeton.
Not as not right now, because their truck's back in service.
Oh.
But because this has taken over week to get the paperwork processed in your next meeting and Princeton's not wasn't gonna meet till this Wednesday.
Okay.
And so um the town administrator in uh Princeton's gonna get the authorization to sign on behalf of the board at Wednesday's meeting, so they've ordered new ambulance, but it won't be here for three years.
Gotcha.
So and their truck is fourteen years old and is it's falling apart, so.
What's ours?
Ours is eleven, eleven, yes, not not far behind.
Ten? Eleven.
Um but if you can just give au- the authorization for Austin to sign, if the need arises in the future, it'd be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, didn't go through the chair on that one.
No, no, that's fine. Um had um so Seth, uh Chief Nip, if I understand correctly, you're asking for authorization for the town administrator to sign i- in in future needs for Princeton.
Yeah. Correct.
Um an I M A as presented before us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um and that's similar to what we had already done.
Yeah, town council recommends that the authorization comes from the board, but the board can authorize and delegate to
Right.
the administrator to sign.
Right. Um so I don't know if the board had a a chance to go through the I M A, if there's any questions for um uh the town administrator or the fire chief.
Uh from my perspective, I've read it, I'm comfortable with it.
Um so then I would um entertain a motion um to approve the or authorize the town administrator to um uh enact the I M A uh for an ambulance loan agreement with the town of Princeton, should the need arise.
So moved.
Um should the need arise to sign the agreement or?
But so I I I think a better motion, just to to simplify this a little bit, why don't we um you can approve the agreement and authorize me to execute on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Um and authorize me to um
Enter into.
uh extend the agreement um should the need arise between the rep and and the town of Princeton.
That's a motion, so moved.
So a second?
Second.
And that covers the the we don't need it immediately, but it's there if needed.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll call Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger I.
Waitman I. Um we have uh we've been um asked to discharge the ad hoc bylaw committee. Um this committee was seated many years ago with the sole intent of being um uh charged with the codification of the general bylaws, that work has been done and since that work has been done and the bylaws have been accepted by the Attorney General's office, um we uh need to officially discharge the committee. We ha- if you recall, one of the board's last year's board's goals was to um seat a a permanent bylaw committee per per the bylaws and we did that. Um and they have been meeting, I believe we seated them in March, I believe. Um and they've been meeting and I believe they've had a couple meetings with the ad hoc bylaw committee, so that transition is is well underway um and has has occurred. Uh the ad hoc bylaw committee, my understanding, has gone through the Attorney General's comments um and those updates and everything have been made, the bylaws have been been posted, is that that they have not yet been, I thought they were going through them.
So um the bylaws are officially posted.
Yes, yes.
Um I think the uh which is not a requirement of the ad hoc bylaw committee, but I think um through the um willingness to collaborate and participate, I'll say. Um the previous chair of the ad hoc bylaw committee has um offered to work with the town clerk to make sure all the footnotes and appropriate dates are um added into the document, so if you click on the bylaw document now, you'll notice that there's still a lot of things that need to be filled in, but the text of the the bylaws themselves are um approved and in effect as they've been posted by the town clerk. Um but any future amendments to any of these bylaws will be the work of the permanent bylaw committee.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
The board worked seriously hard on getting those bylaws done. Has there been any feedback from the town on it that you've heard?
No, the only.
Any departments or?
The only thing I've heard is are those bylaws accepted yet? Um and I think it's also just gonna take some you know, th- this is gonna be our first fiscal year of going through with these new new bylaws in effect, so just a reminder to um town departments, town staff, um board and commission members and the general public of the new bylaws, so if there's a question.
Thanks, prefer them to it, but.
And I think for all of us, now that they're posted and kind of up updated going through them um and referring to them frequently because it we haven't, there's been some that have had either were created or had some significant changes, um and so just making sure that we're following the the current updated bylaws. Um so is there questions or comments about the disbanding of the of the by- ad hoc bylaw committee? Um I would entertain a motion to disband the ad hoc bylaw committee. Um
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
One motion and a second, any other conversation, questions, concerns?
We just put in, like is that effective immediately? Is it that?
No, I think the original charge, if there ever was one, was that they would be disbanded by the uh select board at the upon adoption by in acceptance by the Attorney General's office, so um this is just your formal step and they've essentially been dismant- disbanded already, just need your official motion.
So we have a motion and a second, roll call, Harry.
Second I.
Matt's in a.
Ledger I.
Waitman I. Um Mister Hanson, thank you for sticking around. Um I am waiting to see if we have an E D C um member joining us so that we can follow policy. Um I am hoping that either via Zoom or um in person, so if you can hang tight for another few minutes um and see. Is the board amenable to taking the Purple Heart Day?
Well, we got somebody here.
We'll go back.
Are you watching on T V?
Um so this this is the uh under new business, the fiscal year twenty five board and commission appointments, Christopher Hanson for Economic Development. The board is in receipt of the volunteer form um or application um as well as I believe the chair of Economic Development is here. So um thank you for your interest. Um I think you have a a strong interest and and can bring a wealth of of knowledge to the E D C, so thank you. Um does the board have any questions um for Mister Hanson?
Through the chair?
Sure.
I read your bio, very good, nice. What made you choose E D C out of everything? I think your bio was specific, but I'd kinda like to hear it from you.
Um well, I I uh so I actually grew up in Holden, I actually ran for selectman there uh two two times, I was eighteen and and later on, but uh kind of a white collar town, blue collar guy, it didn't it didn't really, you know, work out too well for me. But uh you know, uh I kinda had to rob some uh against some big guns too, but uh so small town politics has kind of been uh near and dear to me. Um right now, I have three young kids, you know, stuff like that, so my time although I, you know, may like to have the opportunity to sit there at some point, time is definitely not uh there right now, so uh I was uh doing what all the young kids do, uh you know, scrolling Facebook and I saw this post about the E D C and I said like hey, that looks pretty cool. And I feel strongly that we're uh this town is kind of at a disservice to the taxpayers and the fact of bringing businesses or bulking the businesses that are in town up, I mean I I ran on this point as a selectman, but houses uh spend more taxes than they they make by far and uh so for every house it's built, we're kind of doing a disservice to the taxpayers, but the more businesses and the more we can economically develop this town, though it be small, you know, will definitely make a uh a difference in that uh taxpayer offset, which you know, we all know we have to pay it, but we obviously don't wanna be paying a lot of it, so. that's kind of why I uh thought why not try to get involved and see uh what my uh thinking could bring to the table and uh see how that could work out.
Thank you. Noble cause, bring more business in.
It's tough, but.
Thank you, yeah. But somebody's gotta do it, right? Thank you.
Um and um thank you for reaching out and kind of following our social media and getting involved. I appreciate it. Um and I believe economic development has um at least one opening still and I know that there's been some a three-year three-year term. Um I know that there's been some challenges kind of finding um a time to meet for the for the permission. Um and so hopefully seating a a full full um EDC will help in getting the form and and I'll be meeting some of those challenges. Thank you. Um is there any other questions or comments from Mr Hanson or Mr Jordan? I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to uh appoint Christopher Hanson to the EDIC committee.
For a three-year term?
Three-year term?
Our motion is?
Three-year.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second conversation. Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
White man, I. Thank you. Um I believe um if you s- can stop in and get sworn in at the town clerk's office, I believe
Yep.
there's a joint meeting between EDC and RDIC on scheduled for Wednesday at six.
Yep.
Here?
Yep.
Here?
Yep.
Okay, so if you can get sworn in before then, then you can participate in the meeting. Um if you're not sworn in, you can attend, but you won't be able to be a voting member. I don't think that, I'm not sure that there'll be any votes. I think it's more of a conversation, but
Correct.
it would definitely, if you can make it for sure. I'm not sure if there'll be Zoom available or not. Um generally for EDC, there's not.
Okay.
It's
Thank you.
it's an impersonal one.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking around tonight.
No problem. It was it's, like I said, it's I like it, you know, it's interesting.
Yeah.
But obviously, you know, it's not, you know, everybody gets their piece done and they they leave, so.
Yeah.
It's uh
So we made you wait till the end?
it's it's good to see the process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Um we have a next on the agenda, Purple Heart Day, recognition of the Purple Heart Day on August seventh. Um this is uh our veterans agent Karen Greenwood has um put forward that we are um a Purple Heart community um and has asked that the board is she always keeps us on track to acknowledge Purple Heart Day.
Appreciate that.
Um so she's asked that we acknowledge um that August seventh is Purple Heart Day. Um and we have a proclamation here provided. Um and so to to name August seventh as Purple Heart Day.
Okay, I made the board already did that in twenty twenty one. We just provided this as um as
Yep. for the newer board members to see what was proclaimed.
Yeah.
So this has already been enforced.
And the the um we the community, Rutland is a Purple Heart community, so it's support of the 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 community's support as well.
Question?
Yep.
Um do we do we do anything on the sign saying welcome Purple Heart Day?
Yes, um actually, so we will publicly share it as it gets closer um as a calendar event uh on the website, social media, the electronic sign. Um and Karen Greenwood, back in twenty twenty one, she generously donated nine signs to the town that were placed at the entrances um of all the town lines that say that we're a Purple Heart community.
Of Rutland. Yeah, I've seen them coming. Okay, do we need more?
Um I believe if we were gonna place them elsewhere, yes, um but we've we've hit up all the town lines.
Oh, we have.
Yes, yep. And because I think Karen worked with DB with um Director Buckley at the time to make sure that all the all the town lines were were covered. Yes.
Uh you know, I I guess I'm just thinking like, could we put one to the entrance of the town hall where you walk in? Purple Heart Town or so. I'm just thinking out of the box like that, you know, like when you walk into the main buildings, it's a Purple Heart Town, so if you're a veteran, okay.
Do you wanna donate some? So we're here.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Thinking about it, yeah. Okay.
Um and I think in the past, the the lights for the um town hall and the um gazebo were changed to purple and everything also, just as like
Oh.
Yeah.
Nice.
Some days I think it's coordinated. I don't know off the top of my head what day the week, the seventh is. Some days
The Wednesday.
Some days I think it coordinated with the Friday or something maybe for a Friday night concert.
I'm just saying cost, you know. Harry, I'm saying, yeah.
I have no idea.
I was thinking maybe two fifty or something for one. I don't know.
No idea. I can look that up for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
So um is I mean, do we, we can take a motion to um recognize um August seventh as Purple Heart Day. Um the cap- like I said, the town already does it, but we can, I would entertain a motion to do it formally um with support and then um we can have a similar proclamation for everyone to sign.
Um I'll make a motion that the town set aside August seventh and recognize it as Purple Heart Day.
J- just to be clear, there there's no motion being requested tonight. This was more of an informational item.
Oh.
I didn't know if you want if it was still nice to have a formal motion um.
So I think the previous proclamation proclamation that was approved, I think designated it every year.
Proclamation.
Oh, okay.
Um so this was just a request from the veterans agent to just remind folks of Purple Heart Day.
Okay.
It's coming.
That's fine. I wasn't sure if it was like a nice, like a feel-good motion, you know?
Okay.
Um and that is also, it's town recognized, it's also nationally recognized as as um Purple Heart Days. Um we have a goals and objective meeting set for this Thursday, July twenty fifth, the Wood Studio um six P M. Um we'll be doing goals and objectives for the town administrator as well as for the board. Um and our next reg- regular scheduled meeting is our August fifth, August twenty eight, or sorry, August fifth and August nineteenth. Um I know August, end of July and August, we get into vacations and holidays, so if anybody's not going to be able to make the meetings, um please reach out to me and Tamika so we can ensure that we will have a quorum for those meetings.
I won't move to make the August nineteenth.
Okay.
Meeting. Try and get it on Zoom, but.
Yeah. So um is there any other business to come before the board? Here none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
White man, I.
Eight thirty-one.